Start recording. Okay. Would everyone please rise for a pledge of allegiance, please? My pledge of allegiance through the flag of the United States of America, the true republic of which it stands, one nation under God, for both with liberty and justice for all. I hope everybody's there. I don't have you on the screen here. I don't know what happened. But with this, we'll... Well, Secretary Coffey, take the roll, please.
Chairman.
Yeah.
Vice Chairman Malillo.
Here.
Mr. Bonacquist.
Here.
Mr. Schmanga.
Yes.
Mrs. Rapazzo.
Here.
Stephanie Delalow, Bitter.
Here.
Mr. Comenzos.
Here.
No one here.
Who was the last one? Oh, and you were also. Okay. With that, we'll open the hearing. Not open the hearing yet. But the first item on the agenda is that of Mr. Rosetti of Butler Street. And I don't see his name on the screen here.
Hello?
Chairman, before we get to that, can I just read the notice?
Oh, yes. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
All right. I have confirmed that tonight's zoning board of appeals meeting has been convened in accordance with the governor's executive order further extended, which suspends certain provisions of the open meetings law to allow municipal boards convene a meeting via video conferencing. In accordance with the executive order, the public has been provided with the ability to attend tonight's meeting, and a transcript will be provided at a later date. The zoning board of appeals clerk has done a roll call of the board members, and there is a quorum present for this meeting. I've also confirmed with the zoning board of appeals clerk that this meeting has been duly noticed. We have fulfilled our legal requirements by providing the directions to the public and the newspaper through a publication and posting the notice on the town's homepage of its website. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Stephanie. Okay. The first item on the agenda is that of Frank Rosetti. Has he signed in, Peter? I'm sorry. Teresa? Or Mr. Rosetti, are you out there? Unbelievable. Peter, I hear you're gonna have to try and...
There is a call in with the last three digits, 288. They can unmute by pressing star six. That might be Mr. Rosetti. I'm not sure.
Mr. Rosetti, did you hear that? Or anyone that has the last three digits, 288?
I didn't really listen.
I didn't. His name is right there.
Yeah, I see 288 here. I don't know who it is. Well, let's go. Let's do this.
You know it looks like him.
Mr. Rosetti of 159 Butler Street.
Never saw him.
Are you out there? Ready to make your presentation? All right. We'll go for the second one. We're gonna go down to the next. With that, we'll just have to try and get a hold of him as we move along.
288 is unmuted now. It's last digits, 288. Would you just let us know what your name is, please?
Hi. Good evening, Board. My name is Patrick Rigucci. I'm with Patricia Nicholas Rigucci for the Disorbo application.
Okay. Thank you. So Chairman Neets, it looks like Mr. Rosetti's not on.
So what we'll do then is go to the second item on the agenda, and that is of Paul Santa Barbara.
The applicant. Hello, Board. This is Paul Santa Barbara.
Okay. Mr. Santa Barbara, could you present and make... Give us your presentation, your application?
Sure. As you all know, I submitted a...
I don't know. Did I... Am I the only one that lost him? Can the rest of the members...
No. I can't hear him anymore.
No. I don't think anybody can. Mr. Santa Barbara.
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Now we can? I can hear you. How about everyone else?
I heard that.
Okay. So everybody can hear me now? Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Alex, are you out there? Oh, my God. I guess we're gonna have fun. If this town don't open up, I don't know what we're gonna do. Well, we'll listen to you. Hopefully, everybody's there to... Everybody can hear you. Go ahead, Mr. Santa Barbara. I'm sorry.
Okay. As I was saying, I put in a request for a building permit to install a six-foot-high privacy fence at my residence at 107 East Claremont Avenue in Rotterdam. The application was denied because I live on a corner lot, and I was trying to install the fence on the front, you know, part of my house there where the front of the house is. So I applied for a variance, and that's why I'm here tonight to answer any questions.
Okay. When you fill out your application, and I know that we discussed it over the phone, there was five criteria. Part of your obligation to the board is to address these criteria in relation to your application. What I'll do is I'll read the... You give your answers to what I ask you, okay? It's the five criteria that you filled out when you made out the application. Explain why you believe that your variance request will not create an undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to nearby properties. But it's granted.
Okay. Well, being the fact that it is on a corner lot, I don't believe it's going to inhibit traffic in any way. The side of my yard that I'm requesting the fence to be on is opposite of where the traffic flows on the corner. It does not inhibit any of the driveways in my area. Backing out of their driveway, they won't have any issues.
I think so. We're losing part of this presentation. Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can you hear me? Since we... Since... This is Bruce Bonacquist, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Since Mr. Santa Barbara seems to be going in and out, and since he has already submitted a very detailed response to each of the five criteria, would it be possible to simply ask him if he has anything to add rather than going through each individual criteria, given that we seem to be losing him?
I... As far as I'm concerned, that would be possible. Stephanie, would that be something that we could do due to the circumstances upon which... I know that he was breaking up, and I only heard the very beginning of his presentation.
I would think that that would be definitely a situation, especially if someone were kind enough to read his answers, which I can do if you'd like me to. This is for the application of Mr. Rosetti. Mr. Rosetti, explain why you believe that your variance request...
We're doing the second one because Rosetti hasn't signed in yet.
Oh, I'm sorry. Hold on a second. Mr. Santa Barbara.
Okay. I'll ask the question. You'll give us the answers.
All right. I'm ready.
Can everybody hear Stephanie? Bruce? The rest of the members?
Yes.
All right.
Okay. All right. Explain why you believe your variance request will not create an undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to nearby properties.
All right. Mr. Santa Barbara answered this question by stating, "I believe a white vinyl fence will act as a beautification project. It will match the white vinyl posts and railings on the front porch. I believe other people in the adjacent properties will appreciate the privacy they gain as well."
Okay. Can the benefit you seek by this variance request be achieved by some other means? If not, explain why there are no other alternatives.
I don't believe so because it's a corner lot with no backyard for my grandchildren to safely and privately play in.
Okay. Is your request a substantial variance from the ordinance? Please explain.
No. I don't believe an extra two feet of fencing is substantial to provide the privacy I am seeking. I've seen numerous examples of these fences around town.
Okay. And why do you believe the proposed variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood?
I believe the fence will have a positive physical impact by providing a clean and professional look to the yard and provide additional privacy to the adjoining properties as well. I see no impact on the environment.
All right. And how the difficulty arose and why it was not self-created?
My daughter and grandkids moved into my house for financial reasons. The corner lot restricts my ability to provide them a private and safe place to play outdoors.
Okay. And we, as board members, know that the reason that he's... We'll accept that. The reason that he's asking for a variance is because he can't abide by the ordinance as it's written, which is... That's the case in just about every application we get, almost. Okay. Mr. Santa Barbara, did you hear what some of those... What your answers were?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Is there anything that now, for some reason, you're coming in clear? I don't know about for the rest of the people. Is there anything you'd like to add to what was recorded?
I don't believe so. The only other thing I would add is that I did speak with my neighbors, especially my neighbor to the right, Joanne Grayberg. She was kind enough to...
Get out again.
Yep. Her... Which really helped me in the application process. So she's...
Okay. I think... Mr. Santa Barbara, I'm sorry. I'm not trying to interrupt you or whatever, but if I'm... If you're fading in and out and I'm getting maybe one... Something's wrong with the transmission or something here. I think we all know where you're coming from. And as Bruce said, your written application, as we went through it, does seem sufficient. So I appreciate your efforts in trying to get more information to us. But if we can't hear it, it's no sense you wasting your time and we're sitting here listening to nothing. So with that, you'll get a chance later on if there's any questions or so forth as we go through the hearing. Is there any... We'll go... Close your presentation and open up the public hearing. Members of the board, Mr. Bonacquist.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have any questions. I do have one suggestion. Mr. Santa Barbara, you may want to have a survey done just to make sure that your fence does not encroach on the town right away. And, Mr. Chairman, if you could declare this a type-two seeker action. Thank you.
Okay. I'll do that later on as we go through. Mr. Malillo.
I have no questions, Chairman Neets.
Mr. Schmanga. Mr. Rapazzo.
I have no questions. Thank you.
Mr. Schmanga.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Schmanga appears to be muted.
Star six. Alex, push star six. You there?
I am here.
Okay. Do you have any questions of the applicant?
No, I don't.
Okay. Thank you. And I don't have any questions. I'd just like to state that I did visit the site and spoke with Mr. Santa Barbara in regards to these. And as far as the... What... Mr. Santa Barbara, you can hear me, right?
Yes.
Okay. For the record... The survey... Or the... Yes. The survey that Mr. Santa Barbara presented with the packet that we got, if I'm sure that all of you must realize it, that was not of his lot. The reason he had it was he went to his neighbor and asked him if his neighbor could help him out. And he does have... He told me that with the neighbor's survey, he has his... The boundary lines that Bruce was... So that he knows where he's gonna be putting that. So I think that he will be putting the fence on his property on his property because he has that information in front of him. Am I correct, Mr. Santa Barbara?
Correct.
Okay. Everybody on the... Hear what his answer? He concurs with what we just went through, what Bruce asked for and what I said. In other words, he does have the information, and it will be, as Bruce said, his obligation to make sure that it ends up on his property. Okay. Anyone in the audience like to comment on this application, either for or against? I know there's quite a few people, but I believe that most of them, if not all of them, that other than the board members and the applicants are for one of the later items on the agenda. No one's in the audience? Mr. Comenzos, do you have any comments?
No.
Mrs. Bitter? Any comments?
No additional comments. Just the survey and the seeker as Mr. Bonacquist mentioned.
Okay. Let me just get one more thing here. Okay. If there's nothing else from members of the board, nothing else from the applicant, I will close this hearing and declare secret... Declare that this project by classified as a type-two action under secret pursuant to six New York C R R, Part 617.5 C 17, because this is granting of an area variance for a single-family home. As a result, it is therefore exempt. And as far as the county review, it's exempt. With that, I'll call for a motion on this project.
Make a motion that the variances be granted as requested.
Motion made by Mr. Bonacquist.
I second the motion.
Seconded by Mr. Schmanga. Question, hearing none. Will the secretary call for a vote? Lisa? Huh?
Mr. Malillo? I vote yes. Mr. Schmanga?
Yes.
Mr. Bonacquist?
Yes.
Mrs. Rapazzo?
Yes.
Chairman Neets?
Yes. I believe that once we got through... Yeah. The written part of the application, the applicant has satisfied all the criteria to my satisfaction. Let's put it this way. Has answered to my satisfaction. As far as not creating an undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood, and we realize that the variance he's asking for is for security and safety. And the other three, he answered it also, in my estimation, correctly. Therefore, I will vote yes also. A unanimous vote of the members of the board. Your application has been granted. Thank you, everybody. Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Santa Barbara. Okay. My chance. Did Mr. Rosetti call in? Did you call him?
No, I called him. I left a message.
Oh. All right. Apparently, we're having trouble getting a hold of Mr. Rosetti. Maybe something came up. So we will go on to the next item on the agenda. Is that of Ken... Kim and Dennis Marks of 11 Culver Avenue. Kim or Mrs. Marks, are you there? I know I see your name here, so...
Hi. Yes. This is Kim Marks.
Okay. Would you like to present us with the facts pertaining to your application?
Yes. I am seeking a variance for... I'm considered to have two front yards since I live at the end of a... My physical address is the end of a cul-de-sac and then, which is Culver Ave. And then, on the backside of my property is Keller Ave. So I'm seeking a variance to have a six-foot privacy fence, 100% solid on the Keller Ave side. I don't believe it would create any undesirable change to the neighborhood. There are other properties in the vicinity that already have six-foot privacy fences. There's not really any other way that I can see to create privacy or safety for my children. I do not believe that it's a substantial variance considering I have two front yards. And I do not believe that a well-maintained, professionally-installed fence would cause any adverse effect, either physical or environmental, to the neighborhood. I have many children, and mostly children, that cut through from Keller Ave to Culver Ave through my property. I've asked them repeatedly not to, and with children, they tend not to listen. I have... And I've spoken to all four neighbors, the two on Keller Ave on both sides. And then, directly across the street from me is the Schenectady... What's it called? I can't think of what the building is. The Public Works Building. The Schenectady Public Works Building is directly across from me on my Keller Ave side. And then, I have the two neighbors on Culver Ave side that I've spoken to also. And none of them have any concerns about it. The drawing that I submitted that showed the plans for the fence, it's noted on there that it would be 16 feet from the edge of Keller Road, 18 feet from the white line. And my property line, which is noted on number two, it's gonna be two feet inward from the property line. And I know the property line because the person that lives on that side owns the three properties. Constantino, he owns the three properties before, and they did own this one. So I have the property line as marked with a... It's like a stake. A cement stake there.
Okay.
I don't think I have anything else.
Okay. Thank you. You did cover everything. So we'll go on to questions from members of the board. Mr. Malillo.
I have no questions, Chairman Neets.
Mr. Schmanga.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have any question.
Mr. Rapazzo.
I have no questions. Thank you.
Mr. Bonacquist.
Have any questions based on a site visit? I don't see where any kind of the traffic flow would be impeded by this fence. And if you could, please also just declare this a type-two seeker action.
Okay. I don't have any questions of the applicant. And I will also state that I did visit with Roxanne and her husband. They explained to me the dimensions and the... A number of feet, how far away from the road they're gonna be, and their fence is going to be within their property lines on the Keller Ave... You know, on Keller Avenue. It's gonna be inside those... The two... For the people that were... That did visit, inside of those big trees. And you could see, from where we were, you could see the post or the concrete marker that was... That she was referring to out there. So I'm... They're... They are assuring us that it will be on their property. And I have to go along with that based on the dimensions off the road. So I don't have any questions of the applicant. I feel that she did satisfy my concerns that I had. I will state that I spoke with the... As you... Looking at her house from Keller Avenue, I spoke to the neighbor to the right, which is on the other side of her driveway. The fence is not going to be that far over, and he was aware of it. They had explained it to him. He knew of the situation. And he says he has no... No concerns at all as far as what they want to do. So with that... Peter, any comments?
No comments.
Steph? Ms. Bitter? Any comments?
I'm all set.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on this application? But the record showed no one came... No one tuned in. With that, I will close this hearing. And just mention that we did get a county... It was submitted to the county, and they came back and said and referred to local consideration in regards to this one. As far as the secret, declare that this... Steph, do I have to read it? Or I just said declare that this is a... Should I read the whole thing out each time? Or just declare that it's a...
Right. That it's a type-two action under secret pursuant to six N Y C R R, Part 617.5 C 17, because this is a granting of an area variance for a single-family home. And as a result, it is therefore exempt from secret.
Okay. Then I'll have to be read. Okay. Okay. With that, now, I'll call for a motion on this project.
Make a motion that the variances be granted as requested.
Motion made by Mr. Bonacquist. Second?
I'll second that motion.
Seconded by Mr. Malillo. Secretary Coffey, vote.
Mr. Malillo?
I vote yes.
Mrs. Schmanga?
Yes.
Mr. Bonacquist?
Yes.
Mrs. Rapazzo?
Yes.
Chairman Neets?
Based on the applicant's presentation, I feel that she has answered to my satisfaction the five criteria. Therefore, I vote yes to grant the variances as requested. By unanimous vote of the members of the board, your application has been granted. Thank you for your presentation, Mrs. Marks.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. We still haven't heard from Mr. Rosetti. I don't know if... Peter, you... Peter called. You did call.
I called, so I'll try to get it a little bit.
Okay. Okay. With that, we'll go down... Go to item number four on the agenda. That's of Kevin and Brittany Knights of 1333 Paul Avenue.
Good evening, members of the board and Chairman of the board.
Oh. Where are we?
Is everybody able to hear me?
Mr. Knights?
Can you hear me or no?
Yes. Yes, we can.
Okay. All right, so I am, uh, I'm seeking a variance, uh, for a, uh, for a shed, a backyard shed. It's a prefabricated shed. Um, the current, the zoning allows fifteen percent of the, uh, the square footage of the house. So the shed can be fifteen percent of the square footage of the house. My, my shed that I'm proposing is about forty square feet, um, above that fifteen percent, um, uh, limit. So, um, tha- that's essentially what I'm seeking. Uh, the, the shed will be in the, in the back of my yard. Um, if, as you're, as you're facing my house, it'll be, uh, in the, in the far back portion. I, I know, I, I did draw, uh, you know, I'm, I'm no, uh, architect. I, I, I realize that my drawing is probably not the, uh, the best that the board has ever seen, but, um, it does show the fence in my, in my back, uh, the back portion of my yard. The, the shed will be five feet away from the fence. The fence is about six inches off of my property, or, you know, within my property, uh, away from the property line. Uh, so, so given that, we're, we're looking at at least five feet of, of space off the property line. And then on, on my, um, on my southern, southern property, uh, line, it will, will be well over, well over five feet away from that property line. In the neighborhood, there, there are other sheds. Uh, one particularly that I can, I, I can see, uh, from my, from my backyard. It's, it's my adjacent neighbor on, on Remsen and Palma, uh, similar, of similar size, um, that, that I do see. So I, I don't, I don't believe it'll, it'll tarnish the, the, uh, uh, appearance of the neighborhood in any way. Um, it's, it's gonna have the, the white vinyl siding with a black metal roof. It, it's gonna look, um, it'll, it'll look very professionally built. And, um, and furthermore, it'll be far enough back in my, in my property that, um, it, it, it truly won't be, uh, at least from Paul Avenue, you certainly wouldn't be able to see it from the street, uh, for the most part. As far as, uh, the, the reasoning, uh, i- if there's, if there's any way to accomplish, uh, so the shed will ultimately be used for both, uh, pool storage and, um, and lawn storage. Uh, and, and the only alternative that I could think that would fall within the, um, the zoning, uh, requirements would be to have two separate sheds to accomplish these two separate, um, you know, lawn storage and, and one for pool storage. And, uh, a- at least in my opinion, and I, I would hope, I would imagine the, the opinion of, of many others, uh, two, two sheds would, uh, actually be perhaps more awkward than, than one, one shed that slightly goes over the, uh, the square footage requirement. Furthermore, uh, we do, we do plan to stay in this house, and we do plan to expand the square footage of this house with, uh, with a, uh, an addition at some point in the not-too-distant future. So that's, um, you know, again, but at that point, we will be, uh, we'll be within the, the, the zoning, um, allowance for square footage after, after a, uh, square footage increase of the, uh, of the, the, the actual house. Lastly, hmm, what was the last thing? I, have, have I, have I hit all the, uh, the questions? I, I, I don't have the printout in front of me. If there's, if there's anything else you want me to address, uh, I'd be more than happy to. Hello? Hello?
Knights, can you hear the applicant?
Chairman Knights there?
Do you wanna ask the board members to see if they have comments?
Oh, you know what?
Is there a...
Nobody heard anything I said after the applicant got through talking, did they?
No.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, some can and some can't. Wow.
I, I, I can hear you. The applicant can, can hear you, Chairman Knights.
Uh, I, I, let's put it this way. I, I feel the applicant did a good job, uh, presenting the criteria that, uh, in a way he did. Uh, the one question that I, I would like to say is that, uh, as far as the ten foot from the pool, did you get, you realize that when I spoke to, uh, your dau, I guess your, your wife, it was that I spoke to, you had the question of whether or not it was from the patio or from the, the ten-foot distance was from the water itself?
Correct, yes, um, sorry.
Pat, you know, check with the building department, and they'll set you...
I did, I did. And, and in fact, um, I, I, I spoke with, uh, Jim Keith from the, uh, Public Works and Zoning. Uh, I, I'm not sure exactly what his role is, but he was able to give me a definitive answer. Um, he, he told me it is ten feet from the actual w- water of the pool, where the, the, the threshold of the water is. So with that, I, and I, again, I, I realize that on the, on the drawing that I put, it looks like it's right next to it. Uh, in my mind, I was, I was thinking about the concrete. The concrete deck is, uh, is about seven feet wide and at a diagonal angle. It will be, uh, about ten feet and six inches away from, um, uh, the, the, the clo, at the closest point away from the, um, shed.
Okay, yeah, as long as, as long as you got a clarification on that. I know that, uh, when I was there, that there was some question, and I was not, I'm, I'm not one to voice my opinion in regards to the building department as far as, uh, you know, particulars and distances and so forth. But I know that it is this ten-foot dimension, and you have it clear, you know what, and you've got it contained with.
Correct, thank you.
Okay, uh, other than that, and I know I did speak to, uh, your neighbor at thirteen thirty-seven Paul Avenue, and naturally, he doesn't have any problem with your application.
Correct.
Which the shed is gonna be closest to his property line.
Right.
With that, uh, Peter, any, anything you'd like to add?
No comments.
Stephanie? No?
No, I have nothing to add.
All right, then I'll, uh, close this hearing.
I can read the declaration. If you want me to read the declaration, Chairman, um...
I'll, I'll read, I'll read. Yeah, you can read the next one.
Okay, go ahead.
For secret, declared that this proj, project by classification, by classified as a type-two action under secret pursuant to six New York CRR, part six seventeen point five C seventeen, because this is granting of an area variance for a single-family home. As a result, it is therefore exempt from secret. And in this case, we did get, uh, an answer from the county, and, uh, they, they deferred to local consideration. Okay, with that, anything else, anybody, any other questions for members of the board, or anything you'd like to add, Mr., uh, excuse me, Knights? Nothing? Okay, I'll call for a motion.
There be comments from the board members?
Oh, all right, I got ahead of myself here.
That's okay.
Questions from members of the board. Mr. Semanga?
I don't have no comment, then, Miss Chairman.
Mr. Pazo?
I have no questions.
Mr. Bonacrist?
Thank you. I don't have any questions, uh, any specific questions. I do wanna say that in evaluating the criteria, um, I don't see where this shed would be out of character with the neighborhood. Obviously, there are no kind of econo, uh, environmental consequences, and I do not see this as a substantial variance.
Mr. Malillo?
All right, I agree with, uh, Mr. Bonacrist, and, uh, no comments.
Hey, and as far as myself, I, I did say that I mentioned I spoke with the applicants, uh, and, uh, I agree with the comments from Mr. Bonacrist in regards to this application. So with that, I'll call for a motion on the project.
Make a motion that the variance be granted as requested.
Motion being made by Mr. Bonacrist. Seconded by...
I second the motion.
Seconded by Mr. Semanga. On the question? Hearing none, will the secretary call for a vote?
Mr. Malillo?
I vote yes.
Mr. Semanga?
Yes.
Mr. Bonacrist?
Yes.
Mrs. Repazzo?
Yes.
Chairman Knights?
I vote yes based on my comments, uh, previously. I vote yes for that, with that, I vote yes to grant the variance. By unanimous vote of the board members, your application's been granted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now, we never heard from, uh, the applicant, the first applicant, right, Peter?
Hello, I'm sorry, this is Frank Rosetti, I'm here.
Oh, okay, you must have heard, your ears must have been ringing.
I am so very sorry for being late for this meeting. I, I sincerely apologize.
Oh, that's all right. At least you got in, you got here before we called it. Okay, Mr. Rosetti?
Thank you very much.
Your number one on the agenda, but, uh, we'll hear your application at this time. We just finished one, uh, farther down the line. So could you pre, present us with the facts pertaining to your application?
Yes, um, the facts pertaining to my application is for a, um, privacy fence, uh, six-foot high, um, and, and solid. So the variance request is for, um, us, the six-foot over, the two-feet extra height and the one-hundred percent opaque instead of fifty percent see-through. Um, the plan is to run the fence along Peyton Road, along my property line, um, and then forming a corner that then would come towards the house at a right angle, forming a backyard barrier.
Okay. Is, uh, anything else you'd like to add as far as, I think you, you did, you, while you believe your variance request was not creating an undesirable change to the characters of the neighborhood, you did mention that, uh, I guess you did address most of these criteria. But there'll be questions from members of the board.
Okay.
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 And as, as we go along, if you wanna add anything else, you can.
Okay.
Questions from members of the board? Mr., uh, Semanga?
Uh, I don't have no question. I spoke with, um, Mr. Rosetti. He's decided, he's in a situation, and I'll go along with that.
Okay. Mrs. Repazzo?
Uh, I also spoke to Mr. Rosetti. I, based on our discussions, I don't have any further questions.
Mr. Bonacrist?
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Malillo?
No questions, Chairman.
Okay, I, I, I'll, I'll do this. Uh, I don't, I don't, well, I'd just like to say that I met with Mr. Rosetti a couple times, and, uh, I did give him some information that I felt was necessary. Uh, and I think the members of the board, uh, received a copy of the overview of the property. And, uh, Mr. Rosetti, and I, I'm doing this, I know you, you're aware of it, that your initial thoughts in relation to your, excuse me, in relation to your fence was to utilize your neighbor in the rear, to the rear, as your starting point for your fence and head back towards your house, correct?
That is correct. That was the original, the original plan was to continue along the same lit, the lit, the same corner post that forms my backyard neighbor's fence.
Okay, but you explain, and, and I, I don't, I'm not trying to put you on the spot or anything, but you realize why our discussion, uh, centered around the fact that it seems very obvious with the drawings that we received, and that I ca, actually, I don't have mine, 'cause you have it, but it don't, it's no matter, no matter. I'm doing, I can remember what it was, that based on the information that we got from the building department here, uh, DPW, that your neighbor's fence seems to be over the property line for a couple feet, whatever it is, I don't know. But it shows based on the, the overview from the eye in the sky, so to speak. You, you concur with that?
Well, I, I concur that the drawing that was given to me that has some form of yellow lines, which I, you know, I don't know how that drawing was generated, but if that is the indication of the property line, then I have to comply with that.
Okay, and then you do have the dimension for the back of your, the width of your property?
Yes, my deed indicates that the rear, the rear dimensions of my property extend from the corner with my side neighbor one hundred and ten feet along the rear property line.
Okay, and, and once again, I'm just doing this because it was stated by someone earlier, you know, at one of the earlier hearings, about making sure that that, when you install a fence or have it installed by your installer, that it be put on your property.
Correct.
You agree with that? Okay, that's all I wanted to make sure, because like I, like it was mentioned before, we don't have the authority to bless something that isn't on your property. And, uh, two wrongs don't make a right, so it wouldn't, it, when it's not, you know, we know and we can't say, okay, go ahead and do that. But as long as you have your dimensions and you know what, uh, you have to abide by, that's fine. And you agree with it? Okay. With that, uh, I'll close this hearing and declare the secret, now, first of all. Stephanie, did you have any questions before I close the hearing?
Hey, I wanna speak.
Uh, Phil, if, if you don't mind, my, my wife would like to have a word, if, if, if that's okay?
Okay, go ahead.
Hello, members of the board. Thank you for your time this evening. And considering our request, and again, I apologize on our behalf for not being in, in a timely manner. I thank you for your graciousness in regards to that. Um, in regards to the, um, depth at which we are requesting for our fence, we did meet with, um, the gentleman, I'm sorry, is it Phil? We did meet with Phil several times, and we, we did have that discussion in regards to, um, linking into our neighbor's, um, fence. Um, I just wanted to, um, pose the question, um, and share. I realize there are rules and regulations for a reason, and we are not asking for any sort of, um, enormous inequity in our tie-in to our neighbor's fence to be, um, granted. However, with it being just a few feet that are a matter here, and having a young child and wishing to make use of our backyard rather than have it be empty property where we cannot run and freely play and have her friends come, we're losing a considerable amount of footage interior-wise. And we are requesting, and I know that we had one individual on the board, if I'm mistaken, please correct me, Frank. One board member told us that if we were to, um, Acknowledge. Acknowledge that we were requesting those few extra feet, that, um, as long as we said and amended that we would move those few feet if needed by the town at any future date, um, we would agree to do so. I am asking, um, that that be considered so that we can, again, enjoy that interior footage rather than leaving it outside of our yard where it cannot be enjoyed by, um, our children and family.
Okay, uh, Stephanie, would you like to address that?
I think the point that the chairman can make is that we can't authorize you to put a fence that's not on your property. So the sure way to resolve this is to get a survey to demonstrate that in lining this fence, um, up with your neighbors, it's actually on your property. Um, so that way, then you wouldn't have to move it at all. Does that make sense?
Okay, so then the information, the information that we were given earlier with being granted and then having to, um, move it, that was, we misunderstood. That was a miscommunication?
Yes, and I believe that was, uh, that might have been something that I explained to your husband that happened in the past, where someone put a fence up, and when I went to, and, uh, he was called on it. And when we went there to investigate, you know, to go, go through the same procedure that with that applicant that we went with yours, it was noticed that the fence was not on his property, but it was already installed.
Phil, my wife is ref, my, my wife is referring to the phone call I received from a board member that indicated that these, acknowledging that we are putting the fence up potentially on town property would, would, would then put the onus on us at a future point to remove the fence if, if, uh, the town ever needed it, and it would be our, at our, at our expense, obviously. I, I, I'm, I guess, you know, I'm hearing two, I heard two different things being told to me by different members of the board about these things being allowed.
If I could chime in here, I think that the difference is, is that there is a concern that the neighbor's property, the fence line is not on their property based on the evidence that the chairman found. So I don't think, even if you acknowledge that you're relocating, this, this group can't then condone you for putting it on a piece of property that may not, and at least there's evidence to believe is not yours. So I would, I would...
Understood.
If anybody is looking for my advice.
Yes, we, we mean no callous. Yeah, ab- absolutely no, we mean no disrespect and no callous. We just, you know, there's a disappointment in seeing that throughout our neighborhood...
the majority of the fences have not been put where they should be put. And we wanted to apply for this fence and do the right thing. That's what we do as a family, and that's what we teach our child. And we're just trying to speak on our own behalf to, again, take as much property as, as we could in linking to our neighbor's fence and have that to enjoy rather than it sitting unused for potential future use for the town that may never happen. So, please, no, we mean no callous, no disrespect, it's just having to put in a request and ask that of you. Um, having not done that, we probably would have been upset with ourselves in the future had we not asked.
I understand.
Okay. Well, let me be clear, because I, I, based on what you said, I, I would hope that it wasn't something that I mentioned, that I mentioned to you about, and you misunderstood. Because the one, what I said was, the, the one that I was referring to earlier, we found out that his fence was on town property and the applicant moved it. Because he.
Oh, yes, you've, you've been clear, Phil. Please don't think that you haven't been unclear.
Okay.
I'd like to, Chairman, I'd like to ask, who's the, who's the person they spoke to that mentioned that to them?
I spoke to them based on my conversations with Phil, and I said, you know, I can't guarantee anything that is gonna happen, but from what I understood, Phil to say Chairman Eath was that potentially, um, if you acknowledge that the board is not responsible, if it happens to be on town property. So I thought that maybe Chairman Eath was gonna ask them to do that.
No, no, I.
That's exactly what we're, that is the exact mixed message that we received. That's the.
Yeah, and I, I apologize, I may have misunderstood.
The cause for my frustration is because of the mixed message that.
Thank you for apologizing, that's appreciated. Yeah, no, I apologize, I misunderstood that, and I apologize, Chairman Eath, I thought that's what you were saying to me when we had our discussion.
I, I can, all right, it was a miscommunication because that's something that I've been preaching from day one here, that everybody with a fence that does not have a survey, uh, if, if you feel that the survey that you have for your property is not sufficient, you can always go out and get one and then have it surveyed and put the fence where it belongs. But I, I was trying to let you go ahead and do it without a survey, as long as you abide by the rules of the ordinance, which means.
Oh, yes, no, we, we understand that, Phil, it's just, um, we just feel that this is our opportunity to share our, our disappointment, not in you as a board, but in, in the zoning and just hoping, you know, we were hoping that maybe there was the power to have everyone hear us out and offer us the three feet that, over that we were asking for.
As we've spoken to already, Phil, it's, it seems like those of us that do things legitimately are the ones that are penalized, and seeing all the fences that are much closer than my proposed fence line just is going to eat at me, you know, every time I drive by another house that has a fence so very close to the road as compared to what my proposed line was going to be. But that's, um, that's neither here nor there, apparently, so we'll move on.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. All right. With that, I'll close the hearing, once again. And that, entertain a motion on behalf of this application.
I make that motion to grant the variance as requested.
All right.
I would second that motion.
Motion been made by Mr. Schmanga, seconded by Mrs. Repazzo. On the hearing, I, I mean, on the question, hearing none, will the secretary call for a vote?
Mr. Malillo?
Uh, yes, I just want to verify that they are not doing what they were speaking of and that they will be putting it within their property lines before I vote on this.
Yes, we will.
Okay, Mr. Schmanga?
I vote yes.
Sorry, Mal, Mr. Malillo. Mrs. Schmanga?
Yes.
Mr. Bonacquess?
All on me, Lise?
Yes.
Yes. I vote yes.
Mrs. Repazzo?
I vote yes.
Chairman Eath?
Well, once again, uh, based on our discussions, and I agree with, uh, Mr. Malillo, and I, I'm sure that by now, Mr. and Mrs. Rosetti have the, are clear in the fact that they have to have the fence on their property. We do not, as stated by our attorney, we do not have the authority to approve or look the other way when it comes to something that they were asking about. So, but with that.
Oh, please let it be clear on the record that we were not asking anyone to look the other way.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, with that, I will vote yes to grant the variance.
Thank you.
Under the conditions that were, well, further motion. All right. By unanimous, for the board, your application has been granted.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You're welcome.
All right. That leaves us with the last two items on the agenda. I don't know if, uh, is it, did Luigi Palesi sign in yet?
No, but I'm here. Um, Dave Kimmer, on behalf of both of us.
You're here for, all right. And did Luigi explain to you, Dave, that, uh, he's, he was gonna try to get here from his previous commitment?
Um, he may, yeah.
You know, if he does, well, you know, he'll have a chance. But what we're gonna do, because I know it was the one pertaining to the application, uh, on Laura Street, which your firm is handling both of them, and the one for, uh, uh, Maloz, the Helderberg Avenue for Malozie, the Malozie family. So we're gonna do that one first, okay?
Okay.
All right. So, anybody in the audience, I, I'm sorry about the delay for the one that most of you, you folks are there for, but it's just, it was something that was at the board, and I felt that we could, uh, accommodate the applicant, applicant's representative. Uh, taking nothing away from you, Dave, but I, I know that Angelo, I mean, Luigi was, did a lot of work in regards to these applications. So, with that, uh, would you like to, uh, give us the particulars pertaining to the Helderberg Avenue application?
Sure. So, um, Malozie is, uh, obviously owns the, uh, the former banquet hall that's now occupied by St. Peter's. And he also owns the three single-family lots on Helderberg Avenue. So, the plan is to adjust the lot lines between the, the larger parcel where St. Peter's is and the single-family homes, so that the driveway connection between the main parking lot at St. Peter's and the rear parking lot, employee parking lot, um, is actually on that property. Um, and we're here because we need variances for two of those single-family homes because the proposed lot line adjustment puts them below the required fifteen thousand square feet, um, for lot, the lot size. Um, other than that, obviously, there's the five criteria, and, um, I can go through those criteria if you'd like.
Yes, if you will.
Okay. So, the request, um, number one, will not create an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. Um, you know, we're not proposing any construction. Those lots, you know, we're not, uh, changing the fringes of the lots. They're all existing. So we're not changing anything about the neighborhood at all, really. Um, number two, can this benefit be achieved by other means? Um, and I would say, yeah, the answer is yes, it could be, be an easement, but, uh, the lot line amendment is more desirable, it's just a cleaner way of doing things. You know, we, we'd rather just have it truly be on their property. Um, is this substantial? Um, no, because it's all existing lots. We're not trying to create a lot that is, you know, substantially different than what's there. Um, you know, will this have, and number four, will this have a, uh, adverse effect on the impact of the, uh, environmental conditions in the neighborhood? No. Um, it's not gonna impact any of the utilities, you know, there's not gonna be additional, there's not gonna be so many, uh, additional sewer or water demand environmentally. Um, and number five, uh, the, explain how the difficulty arose and why it was not self-created. Um, it wasn't self-created, I mean, all the lots are owned by the same family. These lots were already non-conforming. Um, and the improvement, the improvements did not have any effect on these three properties. So, if you have any other questions? I can answer them.
With that, uh, we'll open the hearing in, in regards to questions from members of the board. Mrs. Repazzo, do you have anything?
I don't have any questions, thank you.
Mr. Bonacquess?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dave, I just got a couple of questions. Did, did I understand correctly that you want to do this to put a driveway through?
Well, the driveway is actually already, it's been there for a while. Just the driveway that, you know, there's always been that back sort of employee parking area behind.
Right.
Malozie's, and, and it just connects to the main parking lot, but it's.
Why do you, why do you want to carve these pieces off if they're already owned by the family?
Well, it's owned by the family, but it's on, they're on, it's on, we want to put everything that it pertains to the St. Peter's site all on one lot. Right now, it's not.
Does it have anything to do with those lot, those homes being for sale?
Um, yeah, the, the, I think Malozie does want to sell those, those properties.
Because they have the for-sale signs in front of them, except the one that says, I think it says sale pending.
Yeah.
So then this would allow, um, that business venture there to retain that, those pieces of the property, right?
Yes.
Is that the, the thinking?
Yep.
Would you, uh, would your client be amenable to a stipulation that, um, in, along with the variance, that those portions of the three lots, when you do that boundary line adjustment, those three, the portions of those three lots that are currently zoned residential will not be developed for any commercial purposes without a rezoning?
Right, I mean, we're, I, I don't know, you guys, I don't even know if you guys have the authority to, to rezone those. I mean, it's gonna, the zoning.
No, we don't, and that's, that's why I'm asking if we grant a variance with the stipulation that those portions of those three lots that are currently zoned residential, that your client will not develop them commercially without first going to the town board to have that property rezoned from residential to commercial?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I mean, we're not asking to change the zone, or we would, we would have to go through that process to, uh.
Okay, so you don't mind that that become part of the, um, if the board decides to grant a, a variance, that that be part of it, that stipulation?
Right, yeah.
Okay. Uh, regarding the criteria, I, I, I took a ride back there, and I don't see how it would be out of character with the neighborhood, because you're right, you already have the existing parking back there. It's, I, I, it's almost like kind of vacant unused room that you have. Um, by simply using that for the driveway that goes through there, I don't see any kind of environmental impact. Uh, I agree with you that it could be accomplished through easements, but this might, in the long run, be a little bit cleaner, particularly as your client goes about selling those properties. So based on that, um, I have no objections to granting the variance. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Bonacquess. Mr. Malillo?
I agree with Mr. Bonacquess, so I have no other questions.
Mr. Schmanga?
No questions.
Mrs. Repazzo?
I have no questions, thank you.
Okay. I don't have any questions. I, I would just like to say that, uh, in regards to the, the presentation, it's, with the criteria we're addressed, but for the benefit of the board and anyone else that may have any concerns in, in regards to this application, we received something today. Peter, would you want to comment on that? What happened, what arrived?
No, I did send that to, uh, to Luigi, so Dave should, and Dave should have a copy.
Dave, do you have a copy of the, what they, uh?
For the sewer easement?
Proposing?
Yeah, yeah, we got a copy of the, uh, proposed sewer easement.
Okay, so just for the benefit of the board, that's another reason for doing that and not having it be the, the property of the, would you explain that, how that came about?
Well, I think the town is just looking to repair or replace, uh, part of the sewer main on, on Malozie's property. And, uh, you know, obviously, it's a good idea, and they're just, they just need the an easement to do it. And it's not, it's not gonna be on either of the single-family properties, it's not gonna affect that, so.
Okay, but just the fact that now it will be, if it, if the boundary line adjustment wasn't made, it may have been a, uh, a situation that you're trying to avoid, it might have been a situation that would have to have been, uh, that you would want to avoid, let's put it that way.
Right.
Okay, is that sufficient, Peter?
Yeah.
We're all set. Stephanie, do you agree with that, to what, uh, uh, was received this afternoon or earlier today?
I'm just quickly looking at it to make sure that, I just had a quick, uh, yeah, I guess my only comment would be to, uh, condition the approval on the applicant's stipulation that they're willing to do the modification of the easement, and to ensure that the modification of the easement is addressed prior to any conveyances that impact, um, that modification agreement, so that it can be properly executed by the applicant. Mr. Chairman, you willing to agree to that on behalf of the applicant?
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay. We're all set then. And that's just another, uh, reason to, for this, uh, to grant this variances as it's applied for. Okay. Any other comments, that, Ms. Bitter?
No, thank you.
Okay, with that, I'll, uh, close the hearing and declare.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Yeah. I have a question. Uh, given all the legalese and the two stipulations, would it be possible to have Ms. Bitter read those into the, any motion that's made, rather than one of us try and recall all that?
She gave me the high sign.
Okay.
Destiny.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, I'm willing to do that.
Okay. With that, uh, as far as the county, well, let me do the secret declaration. Declare that this property, or this project, by classic, yeah, by classified as a type-two action under secret, pursuant to six N Y C R R, Part six seventeen point five C seventeen, because this is a granting of an area variance for, you know, single-family home. As a result, it is therefore exempt from secret. And, uh, the county did refer to local consideration. Uh, and with that, I'll call for a motion on this project.
I make a motion that the variance be granted as requested with the two stipulations to be read by, uh, Ms. Bitter.
First stipulation is that the applicant agrees that there will be no commercial development on the area that's zoned residential without a rezoning request. The second condition is that the applicant agrees that they will execute the modification of the sewer easement prior to any conveyances, so that the proper owner that needs to execute the modification, um, is the applicant.
Okay, thank you, Stephanie. Every, all the members of, uh, is that, that's what you wanted, right, Bruce?
Yes, thank you.
I would thank you and Stephanie for their, her input. Now, the motion's been made. Is there a second? Now, the motion's been made. Is there a second?
A second motion.
Seconded by Mr. Semanga. On the question, hearing none, will the secretary call for a vote? Well, wait a minute, before we go, um, secretary call for a vote. Lisa? Lisa, are you there? Oh.
She's showing is muted.
Mr. Malala.
Oh, there it is.
Okay, I vote yes. Sorry, Mr. Semanga.
Yes.
Mr. Bonacquess.
Yes.
Mrs. Repazzo.
Yes.
Chairman.
Uh, based on the applicant's, uh, presentation and, uh, the discussions through Mr. Bonacquess's question and, uh, the input from, uh, our attorney, in regards to the motion, I can vote yes to grant the variances also. And I'm just going to the board, the variances have been granted. Thanks, Dave. Okay. Went through that one. Down to the last item on the agenda. Thank you, people that have been waiting so patiently, uh, the items. Hold on, I just gotta shuffle some papers around here. For a variance for a lot on Laura Street, that being that of Daniel Di Sorbo, owner in Kelly Bold, contract vendee of eleven oh six Laura Street, which is a vacant lot. Uh, apparently Luigi is not here, so I guess. Dave, it's your, all yours.
All right, here I am again, Dave Kimer, ABD Engineers, here on behalf of Dan Di Sorbo and Kelly Bold. Uh, Mr. Di Sorbo and his family, um, are the owners of a parcel, vacant parcel on Laura Street. Uh, we refer to it as one oh, eleven oh four Laura Street. Or, or eleven oh six, sorry. Um, he, Sorbo's and his family also owned, uh, the adjacent parcel eleven oh four Laura Street. But they sold that, uh, years ago. And basically now they're just looking to sell their identical adjacent parcel, which is vacant, to, um, Kelly and her husband, who are looking to downsize and build a small home on this parcel. And they need, uh, two area variances, one for the, the width of the parcel and one for the area of the parcel. Again, you know, we have the five criteria for this variance. Number one being, we believe that this request is not going to create an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood because what's being proposed is totally consistent with what is already there. You know, all the adjacent lots are identical in size. We're proposing a house that actually fits within the setbacks, whereas a lot of houses are outside the setbacks. You know, it's not a large house. Um, number two, can the benefit you seek by this variance, you know, be achieved by any other means? And the answer is no. I mean, there's no adjacent land to buy to make this lot bigger to, to meet the code. Is this request substantial? And I would say no, because it's, again, it's identical to what's already developed all around it. Why do you believe this proposed variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood? Um, it won't because there's public water and sewer available. So, you know, you're not having to install a septic system or a well, you know, putting any, uh, undue strain on the environment, so to speak. And number five, explain how the difficulty arose and why this is not self-created. Well, like I said earlier, the, um, Di Sorbo, you know, this, these two lots have been in this family since the seventies prior to even the comprehensive plan being, uh, implemented. So basically these lots were always buildable, single-family lots. And they're just looking to, to build on it, is all.
Okay, thank you. Here that you'll be asked questions in regards to this as we go along, but, uh, what you, you, uh, that's, that's the extent of your, your presentation right now. I'll, uh, open up for, close the hearing and open up, not, not close the hearing, but open up the, hearing to members of the board, to questions from the board. Uh, Mr. Bonacquess.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I did take a look at the lot and I also looked at various, um, tax maps that are available through the County Real Property Tax Services. And, and as I evaluate this request against the criteria, and I look at, will this create an undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood? I did note that for blocks, entire blocks, the lot sizes were all fairly uniform and they're all in this particular range. There were some that were smaller, there were some that were a few feet bigger, but they all seem to be pretty much the same over, uh, multiple blocks. The next criteria, can this be achieved by some other means? Obviously it can't because you, as, uh, David said, you can't create more frontage. Is it a substantial variance? Yes, I do believe that this is an incredibly substantial variance. That said, I think that that's mitigated by basically being in conformance with the frontage and, and with the size of many of the neighboring lots throughout that neighborhood. When I looked at, will it have an adverse impact on the physical or environmental characters of the neighborhood? We're always concerned about the environmental character, uh, uh, conditions, particularly in Rotterdam, where we have a lot of septic, but this lot is on a sewer. So I think that the whole idea about whether or not there's going to be any types of environmental concerns are addressed by the, uh, the sewers. So at this point, I, I don't really have any questions. Those were my observations and, um, I'd like to thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bonacquess. Mr. Malala.
I agree with, uh, Mr. Bonacquess and what he said. So as of right now, no other questions.
Mr. Semanga?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I drove around, I looked around and, uh, looks like, uh, everything is, looks the same. I think it's an improvement to the area. And as far as I know, some people doesn't like it. I don't know for what reason, but I think it's an improvement for the town Rotterdam.
Okay, Mrs. Repazzo.
Um, I, I also, I agree with Mr. Bonacquess and I also drove around and it, it seemed very similar to me in looking at the Google map picture and it, it just, it seemed quite uniform. So I would agree with those comments as well.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I'd just like to say that I, I, uh, spoke with, actually I didn't have the chance to speak with Mr. Kimer because at the time, you know, it was, uh, Mr. Pleschy was taking care of it as representing the, uh, ABD Engineering, the surveying outfit that did, the drawings. And the one thing that was pointed out on, on the setbacks and so forth is that, uh, I would like to make note of is that as stated by Mr. Kemp, Kimer, the applicant is asking for two variances and the ones that would really have a impact i- as far as being close to the property line, we'd just like to say that they are not asking for a variance for either a front yard setback or side yard setbacks or the rear setbacks. The house, as stated, they're downside, the applicant, which is, uh, the first I heard of it, wants to downsize from wherever they are now. And they're, they're willing to go with a smaller home that satisfies the setback, the setbacks that are, uh, stated, called for in the ordinance of the town at this point. And if you look around the neighborhood, there's multiple, as stated also by the observation of the other board members, there's multiple homes that granted, when they were built, they were, uh, probably within the ordinance, I hope, at the time, but they're closer than, uh, what this applicant is asking for, other than the two variances that he are, that he is asking for. And there are existing lots, as previously stated by the other members, in the area that are, uh, of the same size. Some may be a little bigger, some might even be smaller. So, and these are the things that we look at in regards to the criteria that were, that were mentioned also. So at this point, uh, I know that there are people in the audience here that would like to comment on this application. So is there anything else you'd like to add at this time, Mr. Kimer, on behalf of the applicant?
No, thank you.
Okay, uh, that, I'll open it up to members of the audience.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Maxwell Heinz, resident of eleven oh four Laura Street. And, um, the primary concern with this application, I'd like to bring to your all attention, is the significant possibility of detriment, significant detriment to not only the property, uh, the value of my property, but of, uh, the adjoining properties of my neighbors. Um, I think it's noteworthy that when my wife and I first looked at this house, we were under the impression that that lot and this property were all one unit. Uh, it was interesting to learn that as we negotiated a price to sell this house, that that was ever, uh, actually a separate lot. Uh, that was brought up late in the game. Um, I, to be honest, if that lot had been developed, when we looked at this house, we would have looked elsewhere. And I can't imagine that another reasonable person evaluating this neighborhood, evaluating the properties would, uh, would come up with a different conclusion. And, uh, therefore, uh, I think it's inescapable that building this house on this property will significantly impact the property value, the resale value of my house and, uh, adjoining properties. There are a couple of other reasons that factor into that, one of which is the compromise of my property, or privacy, rather. The variant seeks to build this house basically on top of my backyard, uh, which is, uh, in the property next to it is currently vacant. So we lose, uh, any form of privacy in our backyard. Um, that's one of the things we enjoy about this property and I think one thing, uh, that anyone we sold it to would also enjoy. Um, and to the point that lots conform, uh, the lot that you seek to build on here conforms to the other lots in the neighborhood. I, I think you need to look past that, look to the characteristics of the house itself. This tiny house that, uh, the applicant seeks to build in no way conforms to any other house in this neighborhood. There are no others that are that small. Um, I think it's noteworthy that they, they haven't presented any indication of what the front of this house would look like. But based on its profile, it simply doesn't line up with any other house in this neighborhood. I mean, these houses are all built in the immediate post-war era. They all have a certain style, a certain profile. And we're basically talking about a little salt box here that in no way lines up with that. And, um, a couple of other points that I'd like to raise. The applicant also seeks to basically eviscerate their, their front lawn by building a driveway from the street all the way across it. I can see no other house in this neighborhood that has a feature like that. I think that's clearly non-conforming. So those are my concerns and I know that, um, my neighbors also have similar concerns. I'll just say with regards to the significance of the variance, I, I don't see how the explanation that the lot size is similar in size to, uh, or similar to the neighboring lots in any way addresses the significance of the variance. That's really a question of how much of a variance we're asking for here. And fifty percent is by any objective measure, a huge variance. And that simply can't be explained away by the explanation that's in the, uh, application. But, um, well, those are my thoughts on it and I thank you for listening, but I know I'm not the only one who, uh, has commentary to add to this hearing. Thank you.
Well, my name is Linda Pelletier. And I live at eleven oh two Laura Street. Um, I really believe that, um, putting a house that's small, that doesn't conform to the rest of the neighborhood would be a change, a dead, undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. And, um, because they're asking for such a substantial variance, I can't even imagine how, how big of a house it's going to be. Um, to build a house, you need fifteen thousand feet and they're asking, they're asking for almost eight thousand feet. So to me, it, it's gonna, uh, decrease the value of our homes as well. It's going to be an eyesore because it doesn't conform to the rest of our homes. There's going to be construction vehicles in and out of our neighborhood. And, um, you know, I, I really am adamantly opposed to them, uh, granting the variance for this, uh, home. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Next, anyone else?
Good evening, um, members of, oh, I apologize, I didn't mean to speak over someone.
No.
But. All right, I'm gonna go ahead. Um, good evening, um, members of the board, chairman. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for your time and you volunteering your services to the town of Rotterdam tonight. Uh, my name is Christina Smith. I'm an attorney. I was retained by Mrs. Pelletier to speak on her behalf uh, regarding this variance application for eleven oh six Laura Street. Um, I used to serve as a zoning board member in the city of Schenectady and prior to that, I was the legal advisor for that zoning board for a period of four years um, while I was employed as assistant corporation counsel for the city of Schenectady. So I am familiar with, um, what is being asked of this board tonight and the legal requirements that are being asked of it. Um, of course, this is an area variance, so this is a balancing test regarding the, uh, five requirements that New York state law requires you to consider. Um, one thing that I would like to highlight to the board is the very first question that the zoning law request, um, requires that you examine is not only whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood, but there's a second component to that as well. And whether there is a detriment to nearby properties that will be created by the granting of this area variance. Um, the physical next door neighbor at eleven oh four Laura already spoke to you tonight about how even looking at this application via the tax map, um, he's essentially having an entire home built in his backyard. You also have the three properties that are around the corner on Oak Lawn who all have their backyards that would abut now this new property. Um, this is a well-established neighborhood. This neighborhood is over eighty years old. Um, people have come to rely on the fact that this property is vacant. Um, it is noteworthy that when the prior owners owned both lots, uh, they did not develop this piece of property for sale. If you have been out to this particular lot, it's got very mature pear trees on it. It's got mature plant and garden life. Um, it's very clear that it was always intended to act as an accessory yard for eleven oh four Laura Street. Other components to consider are that there are three power poles that appear to run through this property. And it's my understanding that National Grid continues to use that as an access point. So that's a consideration to, uh, to take into account for the neighborhood. Um, electrical power, the ease of access to certain power lines and power poles. I don't know if National Grid or the appropriate power company has a right of way or easement to that property, but that would be something for this board to consider. Um, whether the benefit sought by the applicant can be achieved by some other method. Um, again, what you have here is the owner of the property who's given authority to a contract vendee, uh, to appear in front of you tonight. Um, that contract vendee does have a choice. They do have the option of building on a different lot, a lot that would allow for a home that is in keeping with the town's past zoning ordinance. Um, again, returning to whether the variance is substantial, this variance is the very definition of what constitutes a substantial variance. This lot is half the size that it needs to be to support a single-family residence pursuant to the town zoning code. Um, there's been a lot of discussion tonight about the lot being pre-existing, non-conforming. And obviously this neighborhood was built prior. and obviously, this neighborhood was built prior to the town's adoption of the zoning code. There can be no dispute of that, such that all the other structures in the neighborhood are not subject to the same lot width requirement, lot area requirements, side back, side yard setbacks, rear yard setbacks, they're not, they're not subject to that. However, this new structure that would be built at eleven oh six Laura is subject to the zoning code, but by dint of the fact that it did not exist at the time the zoning code was passed. So, this is a substantial variance. The town of Rotterdam made a ruling, and it said that it did not want to build any more single-family residences on properties that did not have a certain amount of lot area and lot width. And this is one of those properties which is unfortunately negatively impacted by that finding, but that is the adoption of the zoning code, and that is the zoning code that this board and its members are tasked with upholding. You know, I would assert contrary that, you know, the proposed variance will have an adverse effect on the physical conditions of the neighborhood. We already discussed utility access, but again, you have four adjoining properties, which for the past eighty-plus years have benefited from the space that is presented by this vacant lot. It's my understanding with speaking with Mrs. Pelletier that she didn't even realize that they were two separate lots. There's not a separate curb cut for eleven oh six Laura Street. There's nothing to indicate that that is a separate buildable lot. In fact, it's my understanding that most of the neighbors believe that they were all part of eleven oh four Laura Street. And again, just to the last prong, which is whether the alleged difficulty is self-created, again, I, I do believe that it would pass that test because the contract vendee is here tonight trying to obtain the variance prior to moving forward. So, I could not say that it fails the fifth prong. But again, this is a balancing act. State law requires that the zoning board grant the minimum variance necessary, and it also dictates that the zoning board cannot grant relief where proper legal proof is not adequately presented. I would put to the board that the information contained in the application is insufficient to substantiate the variance as requested, as noted by the prior, by the resident of eleven oh four Laura. You know, the fact that this particular lot is consistent with other sized lots in the neighborhood, that's not the question before the board. The question is whether or not this new construction on this lot would be in compliance with the zoning code. Can the benefit be achieved? You know, obviously, this lot is too small, and understandable that's what the variance process is there for, is to allow for slight variations from the zoning code with the approval of the town. But as noted previously, this is a substantial variance, it's a large variance. This lot is half the size that it needs to be. Yes, there are similar lots, where we've already discussed how those all are pre-existing non-conforming structures, and they are not required to comply by the zoning code. I do not know if the lot has public water or sewer. I can't tell that by looking at it, but I will say that there is no curb cut there. I don't know if the town has verified that there is water and sewer, but I would just hope that that has, that due diligence has taken place. And lastly, you know, why is the difficulty not self-created? Again, the prior owners, the people who Ms. Bold is attempting to buy this property from at certain points in the past owned both of these lots. They did not take action to develop these lots until they sold one of the lots, thereby leaving all of the detriment, all of the, the issues of having basically a house placed in your backyard, or a house placed that could be single, could be dual-story, so that the neighbor on Oak Lawn, who has had privacy in their backyards for eighty-plus years, will now have a second story that can look directly into their backyard. If, if it is being a second story, again, I know the applicant said they're downsizing, but just looking at the house or the plan and that lot, it's difficult to believe that it would be a single-story home. But again, I don't know what the size of the home, I'm just indicating that if a second story was built, there would be significant detriment to the privacy of the three adjoining property owners on Oak Lawn. And with that, I thank you all for your time tonight. I hope that you will duly consider all of the objections being raised by the neighboring property owners tonight, and consider that they have sat on this call for now an hour and forty minutes just to raise their objections. We hope that you would not make any preconceived decisions without fully considering all the negative ramifications that I've raised in my, in my presentation to you this evening. Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, this is Jack, Jack Bachelor.
Can I just say something? Bachelor speaks, chairman.
Go ahead.
I just wanna verify that everyone is aware that the only thing we're asking for here is the lot size and the lot width. The applicant is proposing a home that is within the building envelope that does not require any setback variances. That's all I wanna clarify, because we talked a lot about the construction of the home, and I realize that that's precipitating this conversation, but it has to be understood that what's being proposed by the applicant is a home in a compliant location on this lot, all right? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Bachelor, Bachelor?
Yep, this is Jack, eleven hundred Laura Street. It's hard to follow up, follow up what, what was just said. Pretty much agree with everything. That'd be, you know, a negative sort of impact, just from how close it is, you know, not really for me, but for my neighbor, how, how close the, a lot of the houses here are relatively close, but, you know, as the previous speaker, I forget her name, was saying with all the backyards adjoining and not knowing if it's two-story or this and that, it may, you may only be asking for the lot size and it fit in the setbacks, but it's, it still could have a, you know, a negative impact for my neighbor, not necessarily me. And so, I've really nothing other to say. The, the previous lady, I forgot her name, laid it out pretty well, and I'd just like to put on the record that I agree with all that.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Patrick Ragucci. My parents are at twenty-one oh five Oak Lawn Avenue, which is the, the property that backs up to the applicant's request. And same thing, I, I do, you know, agree one hundred percent with everything that has been said from the folks that have been objecting to the application. The one thing that I'll add, I, I personally do think that this is a self-inflicted hardship. I understand the criteria. I have the privilege of, of having worked on planning and zoning board for the town of Glenville, and I, I do understand the criteria, but in this particular case, I, I do feel that with the lot size, with the lot area that's being requested and the lot width, you know, being over eight thousand square feet, being requested for, for the variance, I, I feel like it's just way, way, way too large of a variance that's being, you know, needed. This is going to butt up directly to my parents' property at twenty-one oh five Oak Lawn Avenue, along with other, you know, abiding neighbors. I understand a lot of my questions pertain more to site plan, review, and things of that nature, but, you know, I would also argue, and respectfully, I, I appreciate the time and I appreciate the board's opinion, but I would say that it is not characteristic of the neighborhood to put a house that size and a lot that size. I understand that it, it's, you know, from previous requirements that it fits the characteristic, but as of the characteristic right now, no, it doesn't. I, I do not feel that it fits the characteristic of the neighborhood. If those are the requirements and those are the lot width and lot area requirements, I feel that they should be met to and, and it be denied at this time. So, thank you very much for your time, I really appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Um, I actually have a few comments. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, and you are?
Uh, my name is Scott Film. I am the broker of Scott Film Realty. I was hired by Dan Disorbo, the owner of the property, to market it as a building lot for somebody to eventually build on. Forgive me if this, I'll try to be brief on stuff, but I, I always, my mind is more mechanical sometimes than as a Realtor, and I, to, to get proper information out, I like to go in order. So, yes, these lots were all developed back, you know, sixty, seventy, eighty, ninety years ago, before the, the zoning had changed, and at that point, they were all very similar lots, forty-five, forty-six, fifty feet. In fact, Mr. Heinz spoke, and his is the exact same size lot, you know, as, as these other lots. So, in two thousand eighteen, October sixteenth, two thousand eighteen, I believe, the transaction happened where Mr. Disorbo sold the house at eleven oh four Laura to Max and his wife, Maxwell Heinz and his wife. And as I understand it, 'cause I always ask any seller a little history on the house and the property, that he did offer this property to Mr. Heinz and his wife, and that for whatever reason, Mr. Heinz did not buy it, whether it was he, he couldn't afford it at that time, or didn't wanna buy it, whatever that reason is, I don't know the history on that, but...
Uh, this is Mr. Heinz, I can respond to that.
Okay, let, let me finish first, please, and then you can, you can comment. So, he, he did not buy that property. However, at that time, and I have a, a document called a driveway license agreement that was notarized, it was signed by Mr. Disorbo, Dan Disorbo, and Max Heinz and his wife, and it gave certain rights to Mr. Heinz to use a little bit of this lot in the front as a wider driveway, because when Mr. Disorbo owned both lots, he, when he paved his driveway, he was able to pave it a little bit wider. So, the agreement has a number of points, but one of them is that Mr. Heinz has the right to use that part of the driveway. But one of the other points in this driveway agreement is that, and I'll read it, it's number eight, purchaser, which is Mr. Heinz, shall not directly or indirectly oppose, dispute, contest, challenge, or cooperate in challenging the sellers or the successors and assigns approvals, variances, or the requests thereof for development and the, on the construction on the Laura Street parcel of a residential dwelling, and shall reasonably cooperate with the buyer to obtain such approvals, variances, and permits. So, one point that I have is that when this variance request application was submitted, one of the people, as the property owners that are adjacent to this, was listed as Mr. Heinz, so obviously he got noted, got notice, but he did not, other than tonight, put in any kind of petition against that, and rightly so, because he agreed not to. In fact, he agreed that he had no problem with it, and this is a document that's signed and notarized by attorney Nicholas Inatola at the closing. So, that was the, the first part. The other thing that I believe Mr. Heinz said was that, yes, the lots are very similar. In fact, it's the exact same size as his, but he said there's no other houses in the neighborhood that will be built this small. I have to disagree with that. There's two houses right on that street or that block. Number eleven hundred Laura Street is nine hundred and ninety-two square feet, and the other house is one ninety Green Lawn Avenue, which is eleven hundred and seventy-nine square feet. So, it does show that these are properties that are very similar in the neighborhood to this house that is being proposed. The, I, I know that there's a bunch of people that have signed a petition. In fact, I believe that petition was presented late this afternoon, just before four o'clock, by Christina Smith, who already spoke, and it has six signers on it. And the petition states that we feel strongly that approving the pending variance application regarding this property would have a detrimental impact on the practical resale value of our properties, as well as any adjoining or abutting properties. So, obviously, we know at this point that Mr. Heinz has kinda changed his tune a little bit now that there is gonna be something, but when he had the chance of buying it originally, he did not. In fact, I have a couple emails from Mr. Heinz, starting back in October, when we did put the lot up for sale. First offering to buy it, he offered, we put a price on it of fourteen thousand five hundred. He offered nine thousand dollars. I got a, another email from him in April that offered the same nine thousand dollars when he knew it was already under contract. And Mr. Heinz said, called me and told me that he is an attorney, so I understand that he knows, obviously, what the, the contract obligations are. This, this property is under contract. Mr. Disorbo would not even be able to sell it to him, even if he wanted to at this point because he is under contract. Two days ago, Max Heinz gave me a call and offered twenty-five hundred dollars more, or twenty-seven hundred fifty dollars more. He, he offered eleven thousand seven hundred and fifty, and he said it was basically the halfway point between his nine thousand offer and the fourteen-five that we were asking. So, I believe that Christina Smith is the one that said she does not know the size of the house that is being proposed or the style house. So, I'm, I'm kinda wondering how she can represent these people in this petition by saying that their value is gonna be affected when she doesn't even know what the house being built is. But I can tell you from, this is my thirty-fourth year as being a Realtor, I don't, I'm not trying to push that out there, other than the fact that I, I've sold a lot of houses over that time, and I do know what happens when new construction is built in a neighborhood that has seventy, eighty, ninety-year-old houses. The saying of "a rising tide raises all ships" is true in real estate as well, that this house, by being built as new construction, will actually infect the neighborhood in a positive way, not a negative way. And that is the only, on the petition that was filed this afternoon by these neighbors who, who are not adjoining neighbors, other than, I believe, one of them, that this is going to increase the value of their property rather than decrease it. So, you know, a lot of those points that were said, said, I believe, are incorrect. It is not going to be a house in somebody's backyard, it's going to be next to their backyard, just like the house on the other side is next to them, on a similar lot, similar-sized houses in the neighborhood. So, I just wanted to point those out. It, it is apparent that Max Heinz would like to buy this property, but he had the opportunity to do that multiple times and did not. And I don't think it's fair for the owner, Dan Disorbo, to have all the neighbors say, "Well, we just liked the lot there. It's beautiful, and we consider it all our, our lots to enjoy." Well, that's unfair to a property owner that is trying to sell this because somebody else that he sold the house to did not wanna buy it, so now he wants to sell it, and everybody else is saying, "That's fine. We would like you to keep paying the taxes on this property and just like, leave it like it is," as opposed to selling it to somebody to build a house. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Film.
Yes, if I could have a moment to respond to that?
Go ahead.
Sure. I'd just like to, first off, raise the fact that, that nothing Mr. Film has said for you all is relevant to this proceeding. We're here to consider the approval of the variance application, and none of the information he just offered speaks to any of the five criteria that, you know, have to be considered to grant that variance. So, that's one. Secondly, we have an easement, as indicated in the variance application, that governs part of that, the part of our driveway that enters onto that property. And if Mr. Scott is also, or I'm sorry, Mr. Film is also an attorney, and he wishes to offer interpretation in front of the court of law...
I am not.
Right, I didn't think you were, but thank you for clarifying that.
Excuse me, chairman, excuse me, chairman, this is Angela, excuse me, sir.
I'm gonna actually stop this. I'm gonna stop it right now. Attorney Heinz?
Yeah.
I'm not gonna allow this to continue in this, in this regard. We're not gonna be going back and forth. Your points were raised, Mr. Film referenced the easement in its detail. Chairman, I would direct you to go to another individual from the public who would like to speak on this.
Yes, this, this is, this is Patrick Ragucci again, at twenty-one oh five Oak Lawn Avenue. Why wouldn't you let him speak? It's a public forum, he's allowed to speak. Let him speak and finish his point.
Mr. Ragucci?
We are not here to have dialogue...
Yes, let him speak and finish his point, please.
Mr. Ragucci, if his point has anything to do with the fact that he signed a new...
Yes, it does. Let him speak and... Yes, it does, let him speak and finish his point, please. Please do not cut him off, please let him speak and finish his point.
I'm, I'm going to pass it on to the chairman. I've given my advice, Mr. Ragucci, you, you have spoken, thank you for your time. Chairman.
Mr. Ragucci, this is, we're not here to have dialogue between members of the audience. Anything you have should be directed to the chair, and you had your chance to speak. Not that, I want to make sure that everyone else is, that's in the audience has had a chance, and then we will take it from there. Okay, now, who, who was in Florida interruptions there?
So far, it's from Pelletier.
Pelletier, Heinze, Bachelor, Smith, Ragucci, and Mr. Phil, Scott Phil. One, two, three, four, five, six. Is there anybody else, other than those folks in the audience that would like to comment on this application? Okay, we're not in a position to have dialogue between members of the audience without directing it to the chair.
Hi, this is Nicholas Ragucci. I would like to speak.
Go ahead, Mr. Ragucci.
I've been here for 44 years, and I live at 2105 Oakland Avenue. And I'm listening to a lot of things that are really not important, that I feel as far as who signed what or who signed what. What I'm saying is, these people that are saying that this lot size is like everyone else's is wrong. This lot is too small, too small to have a house built on it. Also, Niagara Mohawk has to come in and work on the power lines and everything. There is no, there is no room to maneuver in there. This is just a, this is just too small of a lot. You're asking for 8,000 square feet, and it's totally, totally.
Okay, we lost the last.
Thank you, thank you for hearing me.
Portion of your comments, but, okay, thank you, Mr. Ragucci.
This is, this is Jack Bachelor again. I, I, I just want, one quick question. Can we get an answer on if this will be a full two-story home?
Well, I'll, I'll tell you what I have in front of me. The plan by ABD Engineering says that the home will be 25 feet by 42 feet, but it's unless, if ABD's engineer or representative knows the particulars in regards to the home, I couldn't tell you anything more than that.
Okay, well, I feel that's an important detail to know, if we're, you know, if we're going to, you know, for voicing our opinions. And we want to talk about how this lot is similar to that lot. If it's going to be, if, if it's going to be a full, full-size, two, two-story home, then that, that makes a big difference.
That, I couldn't tell you. That's not part of our purview, so to speak. We just look at the house.
Can I speak? Hi, I'm Kelly Bold, and I'm actually the one that is.
The contract vendee, right?
Correct. And I am trying to build a one-story home that is within the limits of your setbacks, very small, 1,050 square feet. I looked on the, on the website today. I, I did my research and found that I have six lots on that street, most of them under the square footage that we're building on, under by 2,000 square feet. Um, I I'm building a home relative to the neighborhood, including square footage and home style, staying within all the setback restrictions, setting the home back 50 feet. I'm sorry, can I still speak? I don't, I heard.
Yes, I don't know where that.
I'm setting the home back 50 feet off the street, which is going to cost me more money, but I didn't want it to encroach on my neighbor at 1104. Well, I thought if I set it back further, they wouldn't be so upset. But I don't have to do that, but I'm willing to do that. I am, it's new construction, which will bring value to all the houses on that street, because it's new construction. And I researched and made sure that there were real estate comps that are the same as what I'm building, and actually greater. Like, my house will be worth more money than several houses on that street, once I'm done, which will just bring property value. And I have been a homeowner in Schenectady County for, oh my goodness, 25 years. I've paid property taxes to Schenectady County for over 25 years. We had a huge house in Glenville, and we just want to have a tiny little bungalow, because our kids are gone. Most of them don't even live in this state. So all we want to do is build our little tiny bungalow with a pretty porch, just like all the rest of them, and retire. We're professionals. I, so that's what I had to say.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your input.
Chairman, could I, could I add to what Kelly Bold just said about the, the neighborhood? She mentioned that she has documentation from other houses and lot sizes. And I pulled up ones just on that street. 1089 Laura Street is a 36 by 116 lot. 1087 Laura Street, 51 by 128. 1091 Laura Street, 38 by 116, lot smaller. 1095 Laura Street, 50 by 125. And 1101 Laura Street, 44 by 205. So they're, they're all similar on that street. I, I think, I think it was Mr. Ragucci, if I have that correctly, Nicholas Ragucci, mentioned that he'd been there 40 years, and he said the lot's just not big enough to put a house on. But hi, his lot is 49 by 140, and has a 1,452 square foot on it, house. It's much larger on a similar-sized lot, they're both .16 acre. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Have we heard from everybody, everybody in the audience that wanted to have something, that would like to comment on this application? Just a second.
My size is bigger than that. Mr. Chairman?
Okay, hold, hold on a minute. I did let a couple of fellows speak twice. Is there anyone else, so that it don't look like I'm playing favorites? Is there anyone else that would like to comment on this application? Not from one individual to another, but to address the chair or address the board in relation to the application.
Chairman, it's if I may, the only person that I see that has not spoken yet is the last three digits, 098. I don't know if they know how to unmute if they'd like to speak, but they would have to press star six. Last three digits, 098, is the only person I see that has not spoken yet.
Okay, is, is there anyone out there with the last three digits of their phone number, 098?
Yep, that's me. Hello?
And who is that, who is this, who is that?
Hello, my, my name is Alex Dogus, I'm at, at the 2113 Oakland Ave. I just want to point out that there's also a vacant lot that's right behind me that is up against the back of this proposed lot on Laura that is also like an easement for power lines. And I want you to keep in mind that whatever you agree to on this lot, you could potentially have the same issue on the lot that's behind me as well. So I'm just kind of following along and see what's going to happen. I also, personally, I, I mean, I, I know that that's irrelevant, the issue is that it lands under contract for 15,000, and Mr. Heinze offered 11,000-something, and I personally wish that he could just buy the land, but I, I realize why he can't. But I think that would make the neighborhood the most happy, and that Disorbo has had, walk away with money. The, Mr. Heinze has a bigger property. But that's all I have to add.
Okay. Well, I, I just want to make, to make just one comment. I believe that with the input from the applicant or the contract vendee, as far as to the question that was raised by one of the participants, they asked if it was going to be a two-story house. And if, unless I misunderstood, I believe she said it will be a one, one, one floor, one-story home. One-story bungalow, I believe she said. So that might ease up on some of the frustrations or concerns about people looking through, through into someone else. Pardon me?
I said, yep, that clarified that, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. As soon as all, oh, back to what I initially said. Because I, a couple of the fellows spoke twice, is there anyone else that would like to have comments? Particular part referring to the application? Did someone start to talk, start to say something? Okay, no. All right, with that, I'll go to the applicant's representative. Mr. Kim, at this point, would you like to add anything before we close the hearing?
Nope. I stand by what I said earlier.
Okay. Anyone else? Any members of the board have any other comments or follow-ups that they'd like to make? Follow-up comments that they'd like to make?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I'd like to thank everybody for their comments. It's appreciated, believe it or not. It brings different insight into, into these variance requests. As I was listening to the comments, and I was kind of comparing them to the criteria, it did make me think about, yes, this neighborhood was initially developed long, long time ago, 87 years, 90 years, I don't know. After, after the turn of the last century, I kind of lost track a little bit. But that said, if, if, as it was developed, it developed with a certain character. And that character had to do with the lot size. So yes, as, as I said initially, it is a substantial, a substantial variance. But as Mr. Phil mentioned, there are many lots. And that's all we can, we can discuss here as a board are the variance requests, the lot size and the frontage. There are several lots that are smaller, and, and as I personally observed, there's some that are a little bit bigger, there's some the same size. So while the variance is substantial, it is mitigated by the neighborhood itself, by the character of the neighborhood itself. And to that point, the first criteria, the smaller lot size is in keeping with the neighborhood. The neighborhood has smaller lot sizes. I'll answer the question that the attorney for one of the people who spoke asked, she said she didn't know whether or not there was water or sewer. Well, there are both. So the sewer kind of takes care of my concerns about the environment. Will it, because if we have septic, you need a certain amount of land for the septic. You need area for backup, but we don't need that, because we do have the sewers. So I don't see the environmental concerns there. But mostly, this, this is the same-sized lot as blocks upon blocks there. I thought it was very nice of Ms. Bold to offer, offer up that she's looking to build a very small home, a, a one-story home. And again, that's not something that we as a board, that's not part of our purview as we review these variance requests. But I, I think that was helpful, at least in, in kind of kind of easing my concern. She's not trying to build some type of monstrosity. She's not asking for any setback variances, she isn't asking for any height variances. So based on all that, and particularly all the comments, I'm inclined to support this variance request. And, Mr. Chairman, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else, from members of the board? Anyone else in the audience, other than the people that were already given a chance? And anybody that may have wanted to comment, I don't want to cut them off, because we did allow a couple of little fellows, a couple of people to comment twice, which is something. Okay, if there's nothing else from members of the board, I will close this hearing and declare for secret that this project be classified as a Type II action under SECRE, pursuant to 6 NYCRR Part 6.1 7.5 C17, because this is the granting of an area variance for a single-family home. As a result, it is therefore exempt from SECRE. And as far as the county review, they, it's exempt from county review. Spittner, do you have any comments in regards to this application?
No, thank you, Chairman, I'm all set.
Okay, Mr. Comenzol?
No comment.
Okay. No, I had something here, but I'm not going to, I'm not going to bother. All right, with that, I'll call for a motion on this project.
I'll make a motion that the variances be granted as requested.
Motion has been made by Mr. Bonnequist. Do I hear a second? And is there a second in it? Anyone like to second that motion?
I'll second the motion.
Seconded by Mrs. Rapazzo. On the question, hearing none, will the secretary call for a vote?
Mr. Bonn?
Yes, I was listening to Mr. Bonnequist and everything he was speaking about, and all the neighboring people. And for the requirement of, we know we moved it to 15,000 square feet, and it is a big variance. I am going to vote no.
Uh, Mr. Shumanga?
Mr. Shumanga?
Yes.
Mr. Bonnequist?
Yes.
Mrs. Rapazzo?
Yes.
Chairman Eats?
I'd like, just like to say that I, in regards to the comments, I appreciate all the comments from members of the audience who expressed their feelings, excuse me, in regards to this application. Thank you to the contract vendee, Mrs. Kelly, Kelly Bold, and actually the, their representative from ABD for the presentation in the hearing tonight. As far as the criteria, I agree with Mr. Bonnequist in regards to the, that, excuse me. The criteria is not having a undesirable change to the neighborhood. I agree that the lot is consistent with some of the lots that are developed. The fact that it has public water and sewer will not be an environmental concern. And they're only asking for two variances, as were stated, the area and the front yard, whereas they're not asking for setbacks. And the home that's right adjacent to that, this house, on the lot. And, uh, the home that's right adjacent to that, this house on the lot is two-point-eight feet away from the property line. This proposed house is going to be over ten feet away from the property line. And I do believe as, as the applicant, or, uh, the proposed applicant who would, who light, would, intends to move there, one of the reasons that she moved the house so far away from the road, incurring the additional expense, as she called it, is so that the house would not be on top of the, uh, adjacent house. I believe that by moving it to the back, it's not gonna, it's a better situation than if it was there. Not because of her doing, but because of the fact that, under the circumstances, the adjoining house is only two feet from the property line. I mean, if something, if that was the case, and, and they wanted to put an addition on that thing, it would be in the fire co- fire, it would have a, they would have a problem with two and a half feet from the property line satisfying the New York State Fire Code as far as material and so forth. But that's not, that's not relevant to our thing tonight. But these are what I'm looking at in regards to this application, too. As far as the substantiality, I agree that it, it is a big, big, uh, variance that is granted. But this is one out of, this is a, there's five criteria, and we weigh each and every one of these criteria, if, for, you know, pros and cons. Why do you believe the proposed variance will not have an adverse effect on the impact or environmental conditions? As Mr., uh, Bonnequist stated, there's water in their sewers, so there's not going to be, uh, pumping sewage or anything into the ground of a smaller lot that's sewed. It's just gonna be taken away from the, uh, property, just like all the rest of the homes in that area. And then how the difficulty arose and why it was not self-created, granted, this is, because they, the applicant not satisfy the ordinance as it stands, or it's written in the town of Rotterdam today, is one of the reasons this board is, is in existence. To address concerns where, whether it's the applicant, a neigh- the neigh- uh, someone that wants to put an addition on their house, a business, or a developer that cannot satisfy the ordinance as it's written. This is why we do what we're doing, what we went through tonight, to address the concerns of the neighbors and weigh the for and against, so to speak, as to how each and every one of us, uh, think about these applications. And it's a situation where, over the years, we take every application on its own merits. And in this case, I believe that the, uh, pluses outweigh the minuses, so therefore I will vote yes to grant the variances also. So by four to one, uh, vote of the board, the application has been granted. Thank you, everyone, for your participation. And thank the board for following through on this application one way or the other.
What a joke. What a joke.
That wasn't necessary. All right. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. You mean you guys want to stay here longer?
No.
I will make a motion.
Motion been made? Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Seconded by, made by Mrs. Rapazzo, seconded by Mr. Malone. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Okay, good night.
Next meeting, June sixteenth.
Thank you. Thank you for everybody's participation. Okay.